Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call our August 2019 Planning Commission meeting to order. Please silence your cellphones, if you don't mind. Amber, can you do real call?
Wayne Bledsoe.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Phil Chancler.
Here.
Janet Jaeger.
Here.
Matt Lazznby.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Warren McFord.
Here.
Non-Net Race.
Bob Brightenbaum.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I'd like to just kind of go over a couple of issues about how we run our hearing here, just to refresh everybody's memory. The commission will be presented with some agenda items by the city planning department, and the representative for the agenda item will have an opportunity to make some comments or answer specific questions from the commission. Then I'll open a public hearing as appropriate. Not every item requires a public hearing. And this will be the opportunity for you to speak about the issue. Our goal is to have a fair hearing tonight, and I want everybody to be heard. So, we ask you to come on up and speak your mind, but I'd like to get you to keep your talk to about five minutes. And please keep your discussion and comments relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, I will close the public hearing. The representative will then have an opportunity to answer any questions or respond to issues brought up during that hearing. If we open the -- then we open the floor to the commission for questions, comments, and a motion to deal with the issue. The commission vote is based on all applicable state and local laws, the city's comprehensive plan 2030, and the good of the community. Now, another thing I'd like to just mention is -- has to do with the subdivision plats, of which there are a number of them tonight. Having -- I'd like to briefly summarize our role and responsibilities related to the subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, the Planning Commission is the final approval authority of all subdivision plats. With regards to the plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations that are contained in the state laws, the city ordinance, and the subdivision regulations that we have previously adopted here at this commission. While public hearings are required on each plat, and we welcome all comments during -- when we are addressing these items, please understand that this commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that a plat meets or exceeds specific requirements of laws and regulations that we -- that I just previously described. So before -- if you intend to speak, or after you're done speaking, can you please sign up here in the front? And then also remember that when you address the commission, please give us your name and address. So the first item of tonight is the -- is citizens' communication. So this is a particular time where if there's something that is not on the agenda, or it's an item of the consent agenda, and the only thing we have on the consent agenda tonight are the minutes. If you want to speak on anything else, now's the time to come do that. So if anybody would like to, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we have no old business, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the packet meeting minutes of 8/7 and the regular meeting minutes of 11/7/19. Does not require a public hearing, so I'll just ask for comments or a motion from the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we move on to new business. Tonight, we have a couple of items I just want to dispense with upfront. One is the agenda item number one, which is Case PL 2019-160, Talmadge rezoning rural to development district, which has been withdrawn by the applicant, so we're not going to have any more action on that one. Then, agenda item number three, which is PL 2019-217, Clifton rezoning rural with conservation overlay to limited development district with conservation overlay. They have asked to be postponed to a date certain of 12/9, so we'll have no hearing, but I would like a motion from the council.
It's moved.
Second.
Motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, so now we'll get back on track. Agenda item number two, PL 2019-161, the Talmadge subdivision preliminary plat approval.
Good evening. The first case for tonight is a preliminary plat request from the applicant, who is proposing to subdivide two existing lots that consist of approximately 16.22 acres into seven single-family conventional residential lots. It's located at 2042 Bonnie Glenn Road. Here's the -- here's the proxy map. You'll notice that a large portion of the property is white, representing the county. As of two nights ago, that was accepted by the -- by the city council and is now officially annexed into the city. It also includes the portion of green that is currently inside the -- that was originally part of the city also. It will be -- that, as you will see here in just a second, that will be absorbed into one of the other lots that they are proposing. The area itself is -- it's to the east of the Moores Mill subdivision community, to the west of Hamilton Road, and is in an area of town where we're seeing a lot of demand and a lot of growth, and a lot of -- a lot of new houses that have been -- come up there. It rose recently with a Summerland plat that's directly to its south. Here's the plat that they are proposing. It includes seven lots, taking access primarily from Talmadge Lane as part of the new Summerland division. And it also has, for one lot, access from Bonnie Glenn Road, which is its existing access already. The lots are sell -- the lots themselves vary between roughly between one acre and a little bit less than six. It is in the rural district. Last night's Board of Zoning -- Board of Zoning Adjustment approved their request to remain rural and have lot sizes less than three acres, more than one acre, in order to accommodate onsite sewage, so septic tanks. And so that is -- that was the primary -- that was one of the primary concerns that the planning -- that the planning department had and have worked out with them. They've also been in contact with the Water Resource Management as well for that similar or for the exact same request. And here is an overhead. Again, the lots themselves are no more -- no less than one acre. In general, much more of -- more spread out and larger lots than the areas that are around them. However, the -- or the area itself does have a future land use that indicates a lot more -- more intensity than a rural subdivision would -- would allow. And so while this isn't quite as dense as what we were -- what we were recommending for it, it is a little -- it is a little bit more applicable than just the rural designation or the rural densities, I should say.
Okay.
Picking any of your questions.
All right, thank you.
Yes, explain again now. It will or will not be on city sewer?
It, as it -- as is proposed, it will not be on city sewer. One of the -- one of the -- this is kind of a unique case with the timeline that the applicant and has been working with the city on. The -- in order to -- in order to zone to DDH, which would -- which would make it in line with what the future land use is, the ordinance requires them to connect to city sewer and infrastructure. And that was by the -- from the -- from the applicant was not what they were trying to do in order to maintain -- maintain some of their costs.
What they're trying to do versus what -- what is normally required. How far is it? What -- why could they not connect to the city sewage feasibly?
They were trying to maintain costs down as a -- as a family development. The applicant is here tonight and might be able to answer some of those questions.
How far away is the main line for them to?
Want to say it was 600 feet?
We're not getting buried. Go ahead. It's along the -- you see how the creek goes? It's running along there, but it's on the north side up there, across the creek, on that side.
And then they are also -- there is also -- there was also connecting -- connective possibility down on Talmadge Lane, down here.
So they're not connecting because of why? They don't want to? Is that it?
Well.
Essentially.
I'm Sharon Stick, and I'm here for Jean Talmadge, who owns the property. That's my mother. Well, we did a kind of a preliminary study, and this area is extremely hilly. There's a drop of up of 90 feet from the top of our property, and it goes down, then it goes back up again, and then it goes down to the creek. And so there's a lot of terrain or different elevation. It would be hard to get a consistent level for the sewer without digging through a lot of bedrock. There's granite all over the area, and you'd have to maybe blast it to get through, to get to the -- to put in a sewer pipe. It's a real -- it's a real beautiful piece of property that borders the creek and has a lot of hardwoods. And we're trying to keep it from -- keep it in the most natural setting and keep the beauty of it as, you know, as it is. And not -- we're just developing it minimally for family members, mostly. It was something my father had bought 30 years ago with the hope of having the family members come and live there someday. And we were hearing the cost of the sewer would be, you know, over $100,000 because of the terrain, because of the bedrock, because of the granite, and it would just be very difficult to put in. We'd also have to have pump stations from some of the lots that go down again. It's like this, you know?
Some of the --
We have a lot of pictures if you want.
I'm just curious, because if there's a lot of rock, that usually does not perk well. Onsite sewage often has problems there, too.
Well, we have a lot of rock on our property, and like with the power lines came in, they had to kind of blast through the rock just to let it -- but we were able to find, if you have a two-acre or two-and-a-half-acre lot, usually there's some areas that you can find. We found -- we have a septic system. My mother lived -- has a septic system. Everybody on Bonnie Glenn has a septic system, and we're all in that kind of area. But you can find -- I mean, we will have to be -- it will have to be able to perk, and we'll have to find a way to do that, or we'll be back again, you know? We're going to follow the.
Have y'all done the perk test yet?
We haven't done the perk test yet.
Lots are drawn.
Usually you have to have a home, you know, the site where you have to have where the home's going to be and, you know, which we kind of have an idea where we would -- we would think the home would be, but, you know, you have to kind of wait till they -- so we haven't -- that we did -- we didn't have any problem at our house, which is we're on that property. Right, we border this property. We're right there to the right. But the ridge runs all the way through there. And so it was a -- it was a number of reasons why we were trying to keep it.
From the topography standpoint, they have about three different high points. First, down here at Talmadge Lane, another to the west of the existing structure, and then another one further to the west, closer to the creek. Most significant of those, as far as rise in elevation and distance, it would -- it would be about equivalent to reaching the height of 191 College over the distance of a football field. And so that's the -- out of those three, that's the most significant. Gives you an idea as far as the topography that they're dealing with.
And also, the other thing would be crossing -- I had some pictures of pipes crossing the creek. You also would have to have something to cross the creek and go, you know, 35 feet into the neighbor's yard to get to the sewer. And it's a creek that, you know, gets high at times, and I don't know how, you know, much we would have to do to try to cross the creek at that point. That was another thing, just not having the.
So if this was re -- if this was rezoned, you say that it would require connection to the city sewer?
The ordinance requires a connection to existing infrastructure in order to be upzoned from a rural -- from a rural zone.
Rural does not require that, but it allows for it?
Rural does -- it does. That's correct.
So the variance that was granted by BZA was they could have a rural designation, but less than three acres?
Yes.
That's correct.
The one -- the one acre -- the one acre minimums that they have in their lot meet the code for the county to have septic onsite. And however, that doesn't -- rural is the only zoning district in the city that allows septic.
And it's in the city now because?
Yes, all 16 -- all 16 and 1/4 acres are in.
Regulation of onsite sewage is totally the State Health Department. We do not inspect, nor do we know anything about the septic systems, right?
That's correct.
Our city limits.
That's correct. We're not responsible for the septic.
State of Alabama does not require, if I recall, unless they've passed in recent years, a -- an inspection of septic systems on a regular basis, or actually require any pumping of septic tanks or inspection of field lines. So.
I believe that to be accurate.
All right, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing, and those who would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask for further discussion, questions, or comments, or a motion.
Move to approve PL 2019-00161, with staff comments.
I'm going to -- I'll second it to get a vote, but I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Okay.
That's most has been made in second.
Okay. So a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no.
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 Let's have a real call.
Wayne Bledsoe.
No.
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Phil Chancler.
Yes.
Janet Jaeger.
No.
Matt Lazznby.
No.
Bob Brightenbaum.
Abstain.
So two abstentions, one, two, three, four, five. So the motion does not?
Well, I can change my abstention.
Well, it takes five affirmative votes for a preliminary plat to be approved. It's the one peculiar requirement we have. Everything else is simple majority.
I can change my abstention. I was abstaining because I do not think this was the appropriate way to handle this. However, since our own -- our own Water Resource Management has sort of backed away and said it'll be up to the State Health Department, then they meet our technical parts of our ordinance.
But that still only gives us three.
So I will.
Three affirmative votes need five, right?
We did meet with the Water Resource Management people at the time.
Okay.
And they agreed to let us do this.
Okay.
So I must go through a lot of.
Understand. So that still leaves us with three to three then, right? One.
I believe that's correct.
Oh, it does not -- it does not pass. Okay, the motion fails, and we'll move on to the next item. Item number four, PL 2019-387. Do we understand what the vote was? I guess I want to make sure. Ms. Talmadge or? Can I ask the -- can I get your attention? I'm sorry, is Ms. Talmadge or what's your?
My one.
Okay, but you're the representative, right?
Yes.
Okay, so for subdivision plat votes, we have to have at least five yes votes from the commission, and we only have three. So that, in this particular case, that will not pass. So that's got that -- this item will -- this plat is not approved.
It's not going to pass because?
Well, we had -- it's the vote, and then we have some issues that commissioners have individually, that that's why they voted that way. But we have to have five votes before it will pass. And it did not. We had three pass, we had three yes, and three no. Okay, so on to agenda item number four, 2019-387.
Can I, on that same thing? I might suggest that we have -- one of our future meetings have some communication with Water Resource Management to discuss any -- are they fully, you know, endorsing that technique?
Okay.
Within the city limits.
Yes, especially since this failed to pass, we might see something again, so.
Just kind of inquiring as to the potential policy implications of that from a Water Resource Management, that's -- we can certainly have arranged that.
All right, 387, the Cotswolds Phase III preliminary plat approval. Mr. Kip.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a preliminary plat request consisting of performance lots, 84 single-family detached lots, four open space lots, and one lot for future development. The property owner is Richard Starr and James L. Starr LLC. Their authorized representative is Blake Rice of Barrett Simpson Incorporated. The subject property is zone DDH to the -- basically, south of Richland Road, to the west of previous phases of the Cotswold. The Cotswold has a fairly long history, going back to 2004. The preliminary plat shows, as I said, 84 single-family detached lots with several open space lots, as well as the creek running through a large part of the property. The development would require a crossing, and staff is recommending approval based on that the plat meets all requirements in subdivision regulations. And just to note two things from comments from staff is, one, that a greenway access easement or some other form of access for a greenway trail will be required, and that a traffic impact study will be required. We did receive some communication for it, but mostly informational requests. And I'd like to answer any questions.
Thanks. Mr. Rice. Thank you. Okay, this will -- this also requires a public hearing, so I would like to open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Please remind to sign in if you haven't already.
I have, sir. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dan O'Donnell. I reside at 515 Haywood Street in the Cotswolds. My house lot is referred to as Lot 37 in Phase 1B of the Cotswolds. I have two issues for the commission tonight. One is identified on page 27 of the proposed agenda, where the GIS office expresses a concern about a proposed revision to the plat for my lot to include some boundary that's incorporated within the proposed plat. That's been the subject of an ongoing legal dispute between myself and CB&amp;T Bank, the prior owners of the parcel, which I assume was sold off to Starr LLC. I'd like to address that matter second, so that by way of background, I can show you the property as it stood when I owned it, to help lay the foundation for the second This is a historical GIS map that I printed off of the commission's information. It shows a highlighted red area. And if I can approach?
Sure.
Thank you. Lot 37 would be right -- right here, my property. That is Haywood Street, and that is Oxbury, and the proposed entrance.
Okay, got it.
I purchased that particular parcel on February 16, 2017, from another private citizen who had purchased that tract of land at a tax sale. I had several -- or one conversation in particular with Ms. Olene Price about the process of the tax sale, and whether any anomalies or anything that would have prevented me from having clear title to the property. Ms. Price assured me that the processes and procedures in place by law were followed. A tax deed was issued by Bill English, the probate judge. There were some preliminary discussions with the law firm of Rice &amp; Parr on behalf of CB&amp;T Bank and a potential buyer of the property in the early to mid-part of 2018. Our attempts to reach a settlement for the sale of that property to include the land behind my lot, Lot 37, and the land that would prevent easement through where the stub off of Oxbury Street now is, through the proposed extension of Oxbury Street. Those negotiations, even though I believe that CB&amp;T and Biden, through their attorneys, did not negotiate in good faith, they filed suit against me on June 7, 2018, stating that the process by which I obtained the ownership of that land and the procedures followed by Ms. Price's office and by the probate judge were illegal. In the interest of saving myself a lot of time, money, and effort, I agreed to settle in a mutually acceptable term to include amongst a payment for the strip of land, which would be north of my property, to include the strip that runs as an easement across the proposed Oxbury Street extension. There was a parcel immediately behind my lot, my Lot 37, that on the overview of the proposed plat would have butted the creek that runs behind.
Do you have a plat you can -- that we can see instead of this aerial? That makes -- using lock on exactly?
There's a lot. It's not quite shown on here, but currently, there's a lot that kind of runs just like this.
Correct. That's the information I provided to the.
Okay. And then you're on to the -- you're to the east there, just above that cul-de-sac, right?
So there's my lot right there.
There, okay.
And it's this area that would bound the creek in the backside and on, which looks like the south side. So it's that plot right there that pursuant to the settlement agreement, CB&amp;T Bank was going to deed to me as a separate parcel. I reached out to the Rice &amp; Parr offices earlier this week, asking for a copy of the not-yet-received plat and not-yet-provided deed pursuant to that settlement agreement. Again, this was October 24 of 2018. I still have not received that deed or the plat. They refused to send me an electronic version. I've been working in Tallahassee all week. Matter of fact, I missed half of a day, and I couldn't tell you the amount of money to come back today for the hearing. They wouldn't -- they wouldn't electronically transmit that to me so I could review it, which would have saved me a trip up here and taken up your time explaining this matter. But I have two issues. One, that, as your staff noted, would one plat undo the other, depending on which is filed first. That, in fact, may -- if it's my plat for my property, it may, in fact, impact the settlement agreement, which would require me then to petition the court to invalidate the settlement agreement, allow me to countersue and proceed for my ownership interest back in that strip of land as originally deeded to me in the sale of 2017. And I'm sorry for being long-winded, but I would ask the commission if they could postpone a decision-making process on this plat for 90 days to give me an opportunity to work with the attorneys for CB&amp;T Bank to work out the agreed settlement agreement, and in lieu of that, for me to file an action, petition the court, to invalidate the settlement agreement, and then apply for an injunction to stop the plat from being approved, a construction to begin over land that I still believe I have a lawful right to.
All right, I think I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is somebody else who are going to speak?
Yeah, thank you. My name is Mike Moore. I live at 425 Willow Creek Road. I don't -- I'm not sure I can work this, but the -- I know I can't. What makes the little?
Push the red button and don't aim it at me.
I'm sorry. So this piece of property here is mine, and these are the -- as I understand it, this is a lot, a lot plat. Those are the proposed lots for the -- that would border against the western side of my -- of my property. I really have a question as much as anything. Is there a -- is there a buffer zone required for those lots? Or can those lots literally come right up against my property line?
There would be a buffer on their lots, not on your lots, but on their lot, between conventional -- your property is probably a conventional subdivision. So we have a, I believe, a 10-foot buffer between performance and conventional lots. So it'd be on their -- on their property.
So is the answer a yes?
The lots will come together, but they'll have a buffer on their side of the property?
Correct. 10 feet.
10 feet. Yeah, they'll butt up against each other, though.
Yeah, but there will be a -- again, there would be -- it's required that there would be a buffer.
A buffer.
10 feet. And landscaping, there would be?
It's supposed to be. Once the lots are sold, realistically, it's hard for us to. It's supposed to be, once the lots are sold, realistically, it's hard for us to enforce it after the lots have been sold, but they are supposed to have landscape, ten-foot landscape buffers.
And again, just to be clear, forgive my ignorance here, this is a, this is a, it's actually, that's created by the drain on the dam from Willow Creek Lake, and it is a, an area on which there would be no development. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the backyard setbacks? Do we have a backyard setback in that?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet. So that would mean that the house would have to be, what, thirty feet from the back property line, or twenty? Thirty or twenty? Twenty.
Okay. I believe that answers my question. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else want to come forward on this one?
I have a letter from a resident in the Cotswolds, that they want me to pass along. So I'm Jan Newton. I live at seven-two-eight Cotswold Way in Cotswolds Development. On the plat information, I was studying it last week, and I didn't see any kind of retention or detention ponds in the plat, and I'm concerned about the sediment and stormwater runoff during construction, as well as how the increased post-development storm rate flow will, or the flow rate of the stormwater post-development, how that will affect the tributary that goes into the Sagahatchie, because that tributary goes directly into the Sagahatchie Creek. And the tributary, the tributary that goes to the Sagahatchie already floods when it would get a heavy rain, and it gets way out of its banks. And this would just be increasing that problem, and especially when Phase Four gets added to that, all that runoff is just going to be heading down there and causing major problems. I'm also concerned about the increased traffic through Cotswolds and Willow Creek as well, and along Richland Road, especially during the school starting and release times. There's still backups and delays during these peak traffic times. And I actually have a photograph to show you that my neighbor, Ramesh Jergenathan, took this morning. He said it took him thirty-five minutes to get from the beginning of the school zone sign to Creekside Elementary, which is the second one in, from there to Shug Jordan, took him thirty-five minutes. Normally, it takes less than five. And I'll show you that photo in just a minute. But in addition to my questions about the retention or detention ponds and the stormwater runoff, and then this traffic increase, I'm also concerned about wondering where Oxbury Street goes across there, and then it goes to a dead end, and then the street below it is a dead end, and I'm assuming those are going to be added, will be connected to another development at some time, and that's just going to add more traffic coming through the Cotswolds and Richland Road and Willow Creek. So I'm wondering what kind of development those would be connecting to, those two dead ends, and how big a development, and, you know, because that all impacts this whole traffic issue.
I think I can, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. If you haven't already signed up, could you please?
Yes, I will. Thank you. I wanted to show you that picture.
I think I've been in that picture before.
That's heading from Cotswold subdivision out Richland Road towards Shug Jordan. This is after Richland Road, it's already been, you know, widened, turn lanes put in, and...
When was that picture taken?
This morning. But other neighbors have said it's not just the beginning of school week, school year, it's like this often. Of course, this might be a little more exaggerated today because of the first-class classes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this item? Come on forward.
Hi, how are you? My name is Michael Moore as well. Coincidentally, Mr. Moore is my neighbor. We have a little gravel driveway, and it's just the two of us, so our mail gets mixed up quite often. But I have just really a short question, and so this is Mr. Moore's, this is his property there, but it's kind of our view as well, and I'm just trying to see with those wetlands, if there's, if there's plans at all in the development, just are they going to clear any of this stuff? Is it with easements? Is there going to be access to this? Or I'm just trying to see what they're going to do to the forest that's there right now. Is there plans to tear any of that down with the construction?
That's open space, right? I mean, where all the wetlands are?
Yeah, there's a lot of, lot of wetland and floodplain on that property, and you can see, obviously, that it's, you know, been fairly carefully designed around, that there are also open space requirements, but I think the staff can handle some of the traffic questions. I think the question about the detention and the treatment of the open space should most appropriately be addressed by the applicant's representative.
Okay. Okay, we can do that after we close the public hearing.
Yeah, so just, I guess that's Lot eighty-five, and so there's Zone AE and Zone X, and as I read this, this is kind of my first time reading it, but are those, can those be wiped out clear? Are they going to try to keep trees up? That's kind of the question, so.
Okay. We'll get the representative to speak to that. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Susan Griffith. I live at five-thirty-eight Haywood Street in Phase 1B of the Cotswolds. I also own property at eight-twenty-one Addison Court in Lundie West, which is also off of Richland Road. I'd like to second what my neighbor said this morning. I left my property at Lundie West at seven-thirty-five and got to Richland Road, the red light at Shug Jordan, at eight o'clock. I have also left my house and tried to go through Willow Creek in the mornings to get out, and sometimes sat in a line of thirty cars deep trying to make a left turn onto Highway fourteen. So I understand a traffic study will be conducted, or is that a condition of the approval? Can you please elaborate on what that process looks like, and what realistically we can expect in terms of infrastructure improvements to, eighty-four new homes are not going to help the situation at all, especially if the school district won't bus from any of the subdivisions on Richland Road to these elementary schools because they are less than two miles.
We'll have the staff address that. They're going to talk a little bit about traffic and the traffic study, and how that's all going to grow over time, so we'll have some input from them.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hi.
Hey.
My name is Lindsay Smith, and I live in the Oaks at Cotswolds, part of the Cotswolds neighborhood. I just wanted to reiterate about the traffic, not only on Richland, but inside the neighborhood where our children now have the ability to play on the streets. Because this new proposed development has no access directly to Richland, they would have to come through our neighborhood to access their homes or the neighborhood in Willow Creek. So I just wanted to voice my concern. I don't know the answer for it, but with the future expansion beyond this phase, I'm just concerned that it would really change the environment of the neighborhood and the safety of our children.
Thank you. What else?
My name is Richard Pedduskovic. I live at five-eight-one Cross Creek Road. I'm also concerned about the traffic. It's really a pain in the butt, to be honest. And I agree with the two others who also mentioned the traffic problem. And I've seen twenty-five cars trying to go from, to make a left turn there on Highway fourteen, and there's traffic both ways early in the morning, especially around between seven-fifteen and seven-thirty. And I think we also have to consider the future, where it's supposed to be a new high school there in that subdivision. That's really going to be murder, and we have to take that into consideration. And with eighty-four new single-family plots, and most families there have two cars, you're talking about another hundred-and-fifty cars coming in and out all the time. And, you know, I walk a dog on Cross Creek Road, and it's, there's a sign there, not far from my house, you know, speeds up at twenty-five miles an hour. Nobody does twenty-five miles an hour. They're doing thirty-five, sometimes forty miles an hour, coming down the street. I'm nervous with the dog, because the dog's only, you know, fifteen months old, so that's just another thing to consider. And even come into, on Richland Road, when you come to Shug Jordan, there's like four lanes. If you're coming down, two lanes go to the left, one goes straight ahead, one goes to the right, but there's two traffic signals, and you have a green light, two green lights on at one time, and if you're not aware that you have to pay attention, that those only, one goes, one lane goes straight and the other goes right, you're going to, you're going to be making, you know, a left turn there. And I've done that myself the first time it happened. I couldn't believe it, because it's easy to get discombobulated, especially, not only during the day, but at night. And so it's a danger that, I think, the traffic is really a problem that has to be taken into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I live at one-two-four Willow Creek Road, which is the intersection of Willow Creek and Deer Run, and I'm going to reiterate what the other people have said about the traffic. I made a mistake this morning about coming back to the house about seven-thirty, and it took me almost forty-five minutes to get out of my driveway in two-fourteen, which is maybe a half a mile. We purchased the house, like as other people have said, to have a place for our children to play and move around. We see such speeds coming past our house every day that we had to put a giant fence up on our yard to make sure the kids stayed in. And school's back in, everything's getting worse. This lady over here mentioned that as Richland Road backs up, traffic comes the other way to try to get around it, and over the last couple of years, we've gotten significantly worse. So, thank you, counsel.
Any other issues besides traffic? I think we got that one down.
I'll speak on traffic again. I don't, normally, I got the freedom not to get out in traffic early in the morning, but like I say, it is bad. In addition, those eighty-four lots there, there's also building going on down on East Richland. There's houses under construction over there going to come online, so this could be more additional traffic. Plus, I'd like to reiterate what the Ms. Newton said before about the creek through there. I watched the building, oak section was going in, and there was significant runoff, and it actually turned that creek brown there for a period until it, until we got in the rainy season. It did flush it out, but it had to flush it somewhere, you know, so.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
My name's Bill Coles. I live at twenty-four-sixty-five Snow's Hill.
And if you haven't signed in, please do that.
Well, I'm going to speak to that same issue. I'm Michael Bike Golden. I live on three-two-eight Deer Run Road, and on that, you can see, that's that one skinny little road coming down in the middle there. Let's see, I don't...
Right.
...know if this, okay, whoops, I hit the wrong button. Which ones are these?
Like a red, a red kind of, is there a red one on that one?
No. Okay. There, I live right there. I know you don't want to keep hearing about traffic issues, but this is a serious, a serious problem, and as long as you keep packing houses back in this area with only Richland Road and this coming through, everybody from up there at Cotswol that comes to the university, or goes to Montgomery, or goes to the south part of town, will come out Deer Run Road. Now Deer Run Road, I wanted to point out one thing. From my, my place, right there on out, that is a narrow two-lane road with no shoulders. It's a road that is in very bad condition. It's been repaired, it's been patched and patched and repatched, and right now, it's marked for a little more patching, and it just keeps on going on. And when you put these in here, all the concrete trucks will come right down through in front of my house, and when they do, the road will tear up some more. Now, it's not only narrow, it's winding, and so it creates a lot of problems. That is a residential area with a lot of deer, a lot of people walking, and so this is a serious traffic problem. And, as I said, I don't know who else to go to, the planning commission is the one that's approving all these houses that are being packed in here in this area. So the only solution is going to be when you have some other outlets tying in, some more infrastructure going into here. And until that happens, if you keep putting them in this way and then letting them develop through us, our neighborhoods suffer. And I think that's why these people are concerned, and all my neighbors are concerned. Anyway, I wanted to put my two cents' worth in, and I'll sign this over here.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then let's see if we can't address some of these things. The majority of the ten people that have spoken here have to, were concerned about the traffic in various senses of it, including safety and volume and that sort of thing. And so I guess I'd like to start with that first. Mr. Cotton, can you, you or Ms. Frazier, give us a little bit of, where are we heading with all this? Because we realize it's a major issue.
Ms. Frazier's going to have to, she's going to have to address most of it. The one thing that I do know is, but obviously, the city's aware of the infrastructure challenges in the north and northwest quadrant of the city. Richland Road, you know, that's been an issue for us for a number of years. North Donahue Drive, we're dealing with that as well. The one question about these stub outs, this is designed to be part of the future outer loop road right-of-way, the timing of which is very uncertain, but we're, as developments come in and plat, we're having them reserve that right-of-way for that ultimate connection up to Mrs. James Road and all the way around to two-eighty via Farmville Road. There's also, the city's working diligently to try to get a connection down to Webster Road through some of the property that's been acquired by, jointly by the city and the school board. But as far as the traffic study requirements and what that means for infrastructure, I'll need to refer to Ms. Frazier.
It's ironic that we need more development to get a relief in this area. That's basically what it boils down to, isn't it, Ms. Frazier?
So Richland Road currently is a two-lane arterial. Two-lane arterials can carry around thirteen thousand vehicles per day. We had studies done in twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen, and we're hovering around seven thousand vehicles per day. So the capacity of Richland Road is good. Yes, there will be pink delays, yes, there may be some times, especially like today, it's the first day of school. I remember last year when the school opened...
Excuse me, could you use the mic? It's hard to hear.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, or you just...
Just come to the podium and turn your mic off. So I was saying, today is the first day of school, and as I can imagine, just as it was last year, everyone, I shouldn't say everyone, that's an overstatement, a lot of people took their children to school as the first day, so traffic will settle. We experienced this last year. But as I was saying, Richland Road has the...
Excuse me, please.
As I was saying, Richland Road...
Let's let her have her, have her time here.
Richland Road currently has the capacity to carry in excess of thirteen thousand vehicles per day. As Mr. Cotton mentioned, we are evaluating options for another connector at Webster Road. So we are monitoring Richland Road very closely. We do receive a lot of concerns regarding Richland Road. This phase of the Cotswolds that you're seeing is actually very akin to the original master plan that we saw when the property was rezoned, Logan mentioned, I think, since two thousand and four. So this is just continued development of what we were expecting initially. Someone asked about the traffic study and what that will look like. So as part of the development, we do have a comment that a traffic study is required. The developer's responsibility will be to collect traffic data. They'll scope that with us, with staff, look at intersections, we'll have them reevaluate the capacity of Richland Road. But those reports are submitted to city staff. We review those reports, dialogue with the traffic engineer, and make sure we're comfortable with their findings. If there are improvements warranted from that traffic study, those improvements will be the responsibility of the developer. We typically will have those improvements, if warranted, done as part of what we call the development review team. So after today, if this plat is approved, the developer will conduct any traffic analyses, submit his engineering plans, and any improvements warranted with the traffic study will be done as part of that.
Allison, will that study include, because they are right, the other outlet is down Deer Run Road? Will the study include looking at the intersection of Deer Run Road and Highway fourteen, which is a state highway?
Yeah, we will, I need to look at it a little more closely, but we try to do intersections within a mile of a development. We can go out beyond that if we need to, so that's something, as we look at how this is connecting, it's connecting to Haywood Street, which has a direct connection to, I think it's Cross Creek Road, but it eventually connects to the outer loop and will eventually connect north through the remaining... the remainder of the Cotswolds.
Definitely going to be impacted. It makes sense to have a look at that, I would suggest.
I mean, I drive a lot out there because of what I do for a living, and I spend a lot of time in Willow Creek recently. And it, that is impacted by the people coming off of Haywood through Cross Creek and down Deer Run. Road, and it's hard to get out at 14.
And that's an intersection we've looked at for years. The last time we studied it, it did not warrant a traffic signal. So we continue to look at specific intersections that are kind of hot topics over the years.
But it's conceivable a signal could go there with enough impact.
It's conceivable if the traffic warrants it and the DOT permits it. That section of the roadway is an Aldott maintained roadway, so we'd have to have their approval.
City, because it's Highway 14, the city does not get to determine that. That's correct.
By themselves.
Yes. We would do the warrant analysis, or actually, the developer would do the warrant analysis. And if it's warranted, we would submit that to the DOT on behalf of them.
Could we request that that intersection be included in the traffic study? Or is that?
Yeah, maybe it should be part of the, part of the motion. Make it part of the motion. No, ma'am. We've closed the public hearing. I'm going to try and see if I can cover all these. So the other one had to do with storm drain sediment, especially in this particular area. That's just a item that gets, you know, there's enforcement rules that get taken into account for that, right?
Yeah, so at this stage in most developments, full engineering is not done. We will require a stormwater analysis as part of their submittal of the engineering plans, and we'll look at the pre-development, post-development rates. I don't know if water quality is required. So water quality plan will likely be required because it's in the Sagahatchee Basin. But we will look at all of those things once they submit their engineering plans.
And as they develop, if there's any issues, that's an enforcement issue, just go out there.
Absolutely.
Let's see. The other thing that was of issue had to do with Mr. O'Donnell's court concern. Now, that's not before us, but I guess the only question I would have, it has to do with, we're here to consider the plat as it stands.
Yeah, bear in mind, this is a preliminary plat. This is not going to be recorded anytime soon, so. And even that issue aside, what he's alluding to is entirely a civil issue, and it's unfortunate that it's taken that long, as the legal process normally does to sort those things out. But that has no bearing, and nor does the Planning Commission bear any responsibility for the outcome of that process.
No, but we do not want to imply by our actions, should we approve, to imply that we are making any reference to or having any, not presuming, one way or the other, on the outcome of that civil suit.
Understood.
Okay. I'd like to see that that made part of, made of the record.
Understood, it will be.
Whatever our decision is, we're not, we're not precluding any outcome for whatever.
That's correct.
I'm going to talk about the traffic just a little bit.
Okay, I guess, let's have Mr. Rice, he was going to address.
Kind of looks to the point now that most everything's been answered.
That's what I.
Ms. Jan did ask one specific question about detention, and I can further expand on that.
And then something about removal of vegetation around.
Yes. I had another gentleman that asked about this area here. I expect detention ponds to be located at a minimum right here and right here. They will, other than those detention facilities, those will be the only impacts. That's not true. There is also, has been a request from the city for a greenway easement through the property. That coupled with the detention ponds that will be required will be the only vegetation in these common areas that we have any desire to remove. This property is extremely topographically challenged. This road is essentially running a ridge that goes through the project. And what we are doing is we are making use of the high point of that ridge and leaving everything on the seriously steep slopes and out through the wetlands and floodplain undisturbed. This area right here, I believe one gentleman was specifically asking about this. My clients have absolutely no plans to cross that creek in any location but right here at that road. So all of this should be left undisturbed and as open space. But as I said, a detention pond here, and I expect one here, it could possibly go here. I'm not, we'd have to get into the engineering to determine that. One, and specific to some of the concerns about sedimentation, these are permanent ponds. The ponds that will be constructed here, they are permanent detention facilities. We, I personally have gotten away from the use of temporary sediment basins if at all possible because, truthfully, they create more issues than they do good as you try to remove them. So I have taken to, if it's possible, creating permanent detention facilities, using them as sediment basins during construction, and then getting them cleaned out and using them as permanent detention.
Like, just as a word, be very diligent in your sediment control, as you know, and you've been here, when that has, we've had some very big rain events in the development of this area.
Yes, sir.
Caused some real heartburn for a lot of people and a lot of concern. It looked awfully ugly. It was beyond, I think, reasonable control, but please be diligent in making sure that all the measures that are necessary be put in.
Yes, sir.
To control that sediment during the construction.
I believe those were the only, the only questions that haven't been spoken to. Mr. O, I would ask if Mr. O'Donnell, I do have some information for Mr. O'Donnell, and if he would like to stay. I have one more item on the agenda after this, but if you'd like to stay, I could, I could clue you into some of the stuff that's going on. We have been, not to get into his business, but we were also, because we have a long-term, we've been involved in this property for 14 years. The bank hired, the bank that Mr. O'Donnell is referring to, hired us to do the survey that he's referring to, and so we have, we've been involved as well. So I have some information on that.
Thank you. Do we want to address, you said we want to address some traffic then?
I'm going to talk about traffic just a little bit. Madam Engineer, I know you're aware of this. I'm just talking for the record pretty much, but traffic capacities based on the cross-section of a roadway, assuming it's two-way traffic. And Richland is unique, and it's almost one-way, each-way. And so consequently, the capacity is affected that way. And one thing we might want to look at, and just to kind of get a feel for that, is an origin destinations study. They're all originating in this subdivision, and the destinations should Jordan in that intersection to get out of there. The level of service is totally not acceptable by the delays that we have, the way that it is now. And I think we've done all we can do with the changing of the signals, the restriping of the road and the configuration. And I think in the future, it'll be much better. But until then, it's, I feel like it's terribly overcapacity. And the second thing I would like to address in our long-range plan, the number one goal for traffic is the reduction in dead-end streets. And I'm not seeing a whole lot of that effort in some of these plats that we get. And using this one as an example, we could eliminate one of these dead ends by looping that back around to the middle of the block in the other direction there. And I just want to make those comments because I, traffic out there is just not acceptable at this point. We may have to slow down development until it does get caught up. We just can't let it run at the rate it's going.
Is that an ordinance-related issue, a city, you know, in terms of, you know, making sure we have the right kind of connectivity and, you know, we do, I know that over time, we've tried to make sure that we can have through, you know, traffic move through the city instead of.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the connectivity in this particular plat is impacted by the topography and the floodplain and what have you, where you want to minimize connections. But that, it is an official policy of the city, transportation-wise, to always require connectivity, and there's very specific parameters for that.
We just got built into the issue here, seemed like over time that.
Yeah, I mean, not having the outer loop road is really starting, we're starting to feel not having it, for lack of a better way of putting it?
Okay. Any other?
Can I ask one question? Did I understand correctly that to be able to ride the bus, you have to live two miles away? Have we ever reviewed that policy?
It's actually the policy of Auburn City Schools.
Have they been asked to review that policy, maybe? I mean, okay. I mean, I know it's not your decision. I know it's the Board of Education's decision.
Maybe some of the public should go and have a talk with them and see if we can get a.
That might alleviate some of the school traffic.
It can. Any?
As a resident, we've been told that the policy is that they can bus under two miles, but they don't have to, so they're not.
Interesting to know. Okay, so we have any further discussion, or can I entertain a motion? I think with the motion, we have at least one.
If the traffic study would include Highway 14 and Willow Creek intersection.
Right. So the legal issue, I think we wanted to make.
Well, as long as it's in the record, I just, any action that we take regarding this subdivision plat is not making any, drawing any conclusions about the.
I think that's made clear in the minutes as sufficient for legal purposes.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, in making the motion, I want to acknowledge Mr. Golden's prophecy of some years ago, when we were insisting on the connectivity through Deer Run Road, and he spoke very eloquently against that, and we came up with a modest compromise. But this would have been even worse if we had not. However, I understand and appreciate the very delicate nature of Deer Run Road, which, Allison, as you do long-range planning on road improvements, sooner or later, that was built before the, before it was in the city. And therefore, it's not up to city standards, even the road bed, much less all the other parameters of it. But anyway, with that being said, that I move for approval of the Coxwells Phase Three, subject to all of the conditions in the staff comments, and that any traffic study include the intersection of Deer Run and Highway 14. Did I say? Willow Creek, that's right, Deer Run and Willow Creek, Willow Creek comes out yet.
So Willow Creek and 14, okay.
All right. I'll second it.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. All right, let's see. We're on agenda item number five, 2019-388. Camden West North Phase Preliminary Plat. Mr. Howell, hold on for one minute.
Howell, give it a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so the next case is another preliminary plat. This request is for a 93-lot performance, single-family subdivision on approximately 36.6 acres in the Development District Housing Zoning District. It's located just west and south of the Camden Ridge subdivision. The plat itself includes 90 residential lots and three open-space lots. This might look familiar to you. This similar plat was offered in March of a preliminary and final that included the portion that you see here and highlighted, as well as a large portion that was to the south. The applicant has gone back and redesigned the central, or the northern portion of that, and resubmitted it as another, as a separate preliminary plat, effectively replacing the one that was approved in March. That plat is here. It's very similar in, it's very similar in layout as they originally showed. It does include the dead end, dead end in the north and south, as well as stub outs moving through the, the two stub outs moving centrally through the, through the plat. And it also includes connectivity through, through the south, right here, which was one of the, which was one of the comments that staff provided on the south side here, just north of the, the bottom, the southern cul-de-sac. The subdivision use has a gross density of 2.45 dwelling units an acre. That's below the five and a half maximum of Development District housing. It also does have another difference between this and the previous plat, the style of single-family homes that are in the central area of the, of the plat. These, these lots are going to be much more fronting the, fronting the road, still within their setbacks, taking rear access from an alley behind both sides of the road. And also, the open-space lots that it includes satisfy the requirement in the DDH, and it goes, provides 32% open space, 2% more than the requirement. Residential buffers along the eastern side will be included with the conventional subdivision Camden West, or excuse me, Camden Ridge to its east. Pending any other questions, the staff?
Mr. Rice?
Yes?
No question.
When you talked about the service road, is that just for that very dense part in the, kind of in the?
Yes, there, well, it's, I'm not sure I would describe it as a service road, however, it will.
Will it have like back, a back common?
All access, right. Common drive, access through all.
Those particular homes will be set closer to the street in that.
Still within their setback, but yes.
And those are private, that's private, will be privately owned, that's not a.
Correct.
Yeah, it'll be a private drive. There'll be rear-loaded garages.
But it's just for that portion, not for the entire?
Correct. Just through the central section, through the central section here, the, all other, all other residential areas on the north and the south will be typical front-loaded garages.
Thanks. Mr. Rice? Okay. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I would like to open the public hearing now. Anybody would like to come up and speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, or motions.
I've got a question, or want some elaboration on these smaller lots in the center, based on the last sentence of the analysis in your report. Preface to neighborhood preservation.
So the future, future land use for this particular area is designated as neighborhood preservation. That designation applies for any existing and stable neighborhoods. And so that assumes the existence of a residential area already there, right? Since there's nothing there currently, it's vacant land, we're apply, we would apply the similar densities that are next to it through Camden Ridge. And it does, it does include densities that are a little bit higher than what Camden Ridge includes, which is. Might include it in there somewhere. 2.3, or 2.03 dwelling units for Camden Ridge. That comparison with the net density of the.
Basically, just making the observation that the lots in the middle of this are significantly smaller than the adjacent development, but also within the confines of what the zoning ordinance allows.
But now, what was the neighborhood preservation designation that's going to be placed on it? Is that what I heard you say?
That's the future land use designation of it and the surrounding areas as of right now.
Which then would carry with it the single-family definition?
Correct.
And these lots, or the smaller lots, how does that density compare with the neighborhood we're comparing it to?
That, so the neighborhood adjacent to it is currently approximately 2.03 dwelling units an acre. So this is roughly twice that for just that central portion.
This is twice as dense?
The central portion.
Just the middle section.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
That's four to one acre.
We're basing it on the overall density of.
If you, if you were to, yeah, if you were to calculate the overall density, it's going to bring that number, it's going to bring that number down.
Which means then.
To what? Is that number in here, Jay?
It is. It's a gross density.
2.45.
2.45.
So then that means that some of these lots are significantly larger than those in Camden Ridge, to get that kind of average.
The cul-de-sac lots are.
Could be.
Those lots.
Yeah. Yeah.
It should be noted that gross density calculation, I think it was 2.03 for all of Camden Ridge. It also includes all undeveloped property in Camden Ridge, which is all of their common space and open space and things like that. So you're not looking at just lot, single lot size, you're also looking at an area of undeveloped property as well, in Camden Ridge, as well as here.
Well, that, I'll be, but, all right, so that, that density for the 2.03 include, is primarily just for the, the neighboring, the neighboring lots there. It does not include the open space for, for that.
Doesn't include any of the rear areas that.
No.
Are huge drainage channels, and some of them are parts of lots that are.
So a gross density for Camden Ridge would include open space and other areas, just like the open space on this plat does.
But what you're talking about is, is not, is only the adjacent lots?
Correct.
Okay, let's see here. Did I have a public hearing already?
No.
Okay. I did. Thank you. Okay.
Good job, Amber.
All right, so we're looking for either further discussion or a motion.
Can we talk a little bit more about?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm, so we've got DDH, which allows a higher density than what is even proposed. And then we have this concept of neighborhood preservation, which is part of the future.
Right. Yeah, the, you know, and it gets.
Put a line those two.
Sure, it's understandable, and it's, you know, it's complicated, because you also have, you've got your land use designations, you've got your zoning designations, and you also have two different paths for subdivisions, performance and conventional, which also largely governs how these things are looked at and examined. Much of Camden Ridge is, is conventional, and this is performance. So having a performance subdivision, you're going to expect typically smaller lots in return for common open space. As far as the neighborhood preservation land use classification goes, that was put in place in this area simply in anticipation of future residential growth in this area. And, and as Commissioner McCord mentioned earlier, neighborhood preservation presumes it's, it's essentially exclusively single-family detached.
Thank you.
Because it's, it's designed to be in direct alignment with the neighborhood conservation zoning district, even though DDH is not NC. It's contemplating traditional, single-family neighborhood and surroundings.
Needed all of that to fall into place.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Okay, just because I've got a little bit of concert, consternation about whether I had a public hearing or not, I'm going to have another public hearing on this one.
He said he did, she was keeping.
I know she did.
Is it subject to?
So would anybody like to speak on this item? Okay. We'll say now for sure it's closed. I'm sorry, Amber. Okay, so we have a motion, please, for this one, for further discussion.
I'd like to make a motion on PL 2019-00388, Camden West North Phase Preliminary Plat, for approval with all staff comments.
I will second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Okay, so we're on, let's see. Item number, wait a minute, let's try. Item number, PL 2019-390, Preserve 4A, Section 2, Preliminary Plat, Mr. Weintraut.
Thank you. Good evening. This is, as you mentioned, is the Preserve 4A, Section 2, Preliminary Plat. This is deja vu all over again. A little less than two years ago, they came through with a plat for preliminary approval, very similar to this, and it expired before they were able to work out some issues. This property is approximately 18 acres, proposing 53 buildable lots, three open-space lots. The land, future land use for this area is planned development. The lot sizes are keeping in the same as what the master development plan had showed The, it's, it's consistent with the master development plan that was approved by the city council. There really, other than the comments that are in the plat, there's no other issues with the plat. Again, it's very similar to what you had seen previously. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. I don't see a representative for.
Okay. This requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward, speak on this? Seeing no one, oh, come on. Come on up. Give us your name and address. Got to make it a little formal. Can you, can you, I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? They have to record it.
Scott Blair. I live at 273 Kobe Drive. So the pond that's right in here, are y'all talking about affecting that pond?
There shouldn't be any changes to the pond. That's part of the open space. So this plat doesn't anticipate changing the pond.
Pretty standard, when we did.
That's basically all I wanted to know. It wasn't real clear the letter they got. That's basically all I wanted to know.
Okay. All right, can you, if you, can you sign in, please? Anybody else? All right, I'll close the public hearing and ask for discussion, questions, comments, motion.
I'd move on approval of item six on the agenda with the subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number seven, which is PL 2019-395, Sanford Commercial Subdivision Plat Number Six, Preliminary Plat Approval, Mr. Howell.
Yes. All right. So preliminary plat, again, for Sanford Commercial PDD. It's a two-lot subdivision that includes dedication of right-of-way into a lot that was created from the previous plat. This is number six, the one for, one prior was number five and a month or two ago. That lot, that previous subdivision created this lot here in the center at 2M, as well as its access with this road. The subsequent lot, the subsequent subdivision here subdivides the lot that it created also up here into two, into presumably their, their final configuration, as well as a, this cul-de-sac that provides access to the, to the lot down at the bottom, as well as secondary to the, the second, the first one that was created and the previous one. These will be commercial, commercial lots in accordance with the PDD and the master development plan that was approved earlier. And subject to any questions for staff.
Thanks. Is there a representative here?
I don't believe there are representatives. I know that they mentioned that they were not going to be able to hear.
All right, thank you. Open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, or a motion.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. These commercial lots, I don't think are affected in any way by the airport zoning, but lots that are, development are this close to the glide pass for this runway or in these airport planning area, I'd like to have that map shown at the public hearing, so it's a public record. People know where that is, whether it has an effect or not.
Oh, just, just put all the airport overlay designations on the map. We can do that.
As a matter of public, public record.
Not a problem.
I'd move approval of item seven with staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Let's see, we're down to item number eight, which is the 2019-377 North Ross Duplexes. It's a recommendation to city council for conditional use approval for performance residential use. Mr. Caldwell.
All right, good evening. The property owner and applicant is Chris Birdsong, and he's here this evening. Mr. Birdsong's looking at redeveloping what currently is six properties with six single-family homes on it into a five duplex development with one of the single-family homes remaining. The property's zoned RDD. It's located on North Ross Street. It backs up to the Le Mans Apartments, and it's located between Drake and Martin Avenue on the west side. Here we have a colorized site plan that gives you an idea of the, the five duplexes and the one single-family house to the right, which is oriented north. The duplexes effectively are replacing one-for-one, the single-family they're taking away. All of these duplexes are three-bedroom, three-bath duplexes. They don't meet our private dormitory definition, and are considered, though they look as duplexes, are considered to be a multi-unit development. For what it's worth, duplexes are conditional use in the RDD as well, so if these were fee simple duplexes, they would be before you as well. Got, Mr. Birdsong provided some elevations to give you an idea of what the four, four models would look like for the five units. And here we have the aerial. You see Le Mans to the rear, multifamily to the rear and across the street on Ross Are there any questions for staff?
What are our parking requirements for duplexes?
One per, one per bed. The same with townhomes.
And I think the 37 parking.
And how many beds?
How many, how many beds he asked? How many beds?
Thirty beds.
Thirty.
How many parking spaces? Thirty. How many parking spaces?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Okay. Okay, this requires a public hearing as well. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, or a motion.
I've got a question, reference clarification on your comment number 12. The following shall be located, our screen shows not to be visible from any public street, and satellite antenna are included in that paragraph. Is that enforceable, or who looks after that, or should that be revisited, or?
Mr. Lassman, because we build, and we'll contract with charter spectrums who we use, and, and they'll lay all the internet and the cable and whatnot in the lace. We do not allow satellite dishes, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's, yeah, because you see them all over town, and I didn't want to duly enforce them on you if we're not enforcing them every place else. But I know in our neighborhood, they are a no-no, and the cable companies don't realize what the regulations are until we've already put them up somewhere. So I just want to clarify.
That's something, from a, from a more citywide perspective, that's something we're going to look at in the DRT process and try to work through with engineer, the architect, and the contractor, that, that we don't want to see these things once something's been built and is, is on the ground, that's, it's hard to retroactively take away.
I'd move on approval of item eight on the agenda with the, the conditions stipulated in the staff report.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number nine, 2019-386 Mall Boulevard and Warehouse Recommendation to the City Council for Conditional Use Approval for Commercial Support Use, a warehouse. Robeson.
Yes. This is the final item on the agenda this evening, and it's very similar to a request that you previously heard a couple months ago for the property to the west. The applicant is AF Holdings. Don Allen is representing, is the authorized representative for the property owner. The request is very similar to the one that was next door, except it's going to be seven individual suites, where the property next door was just one. So the building will contain office space and warehouse space, seven individual units. And some of the parking for the warehouse units will be parked inside. And they do satisfy all of the parking requirements, and we do recommend approval. I received no correspondence for this request, and the applicant is not present this evening.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing as well. Would anybody like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Questions, comments, motion?
Moving approval of item nine on the agenda with staff comments.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Brings us to the end. Mr. Cotton, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Just, just another reminder about the work session. Sent an email out to you. I think I've heard back from most of you for staff to present to you our findings and recommendations related to the Cox Wire Road Focus Area Study, which is one of our, in our fiscal year 19 work program, which is quickly coming to a close. And I will coordinate with Water Resource Management, see if we maybe can't tack, tack on a little brief presentation about septic and connection requirements to sewer at the tail end of our packet meeting in September.
Would be good. Okay.
We'll do that.
Excellent. We, I call the meeting adjourned.